We're here today to talk about the economic developments for our community. Whatever is in the future for our local and area economy. You know, for several decades now, our community has benefited from the existing businesses that are here. I saw Harvey Dean with Pittsco and companies like yours, Harvey, have been so good to our community. But we also realize, we also need to be on the lookout for those new companies and new employers to our community. And for too long, Pittsburgh, I think, has been chasing everything. And when you chase everything, you usually end up with nothing. So about six months ago, we embarked upon an effort, thanks to the approval by our city commission, which is represented right over here, Monica Bernand, John Ketterman, Michael Gray, and Chuck myself, here with us today. They approved us moving forward with a target industry analysis. And the most important part of this was looking at what Pittsburgh is and what it is not. And then looking at businesses and industry sectors that might be looking for a community that fits our profile. So as we began this work, we wanted the very best to do this. And thanks to a search group led by Marty Beasley, Monica Bernand was part of that, Jeremy Johnson as well from the city commission, we found that Angelu Economics. They're based in Austin, Texas. They've been doing this for a number of years. They've got over 650 clients that they have contracted with. And they have cited over $18 billion in projects across the US and abroad. So we've got the very best doing this work. They've spent a lot of time, gotten a lot of local input on this. So without any further ado, we're going to turn it over to Angelo's Angelo from Angelu Economics. Thank you, Angelo.
Honorable mayor, honorable city commissioners, honored guests, community leaders, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with me to present to you the draft copy of the final comprehensive economic strategy plan for the city of Pittsburgh. Today is a momentous day. Our nation is creating a new trend. And the city of Pittsburgh is doing its first ever economic development strategy. I've been in economic development for a little over 33 years now. Every consultant has to establish their credentials. I think Blake did a pretty good job of establishing mine. But I'm not just a consultant. I've been in the field. I'm a practitioner as well. For 12 years, I led the economic development efforts in Austin, Texas, as the vice president for the Chamber of Commerce in charge of economic development as well as chief economist. And we built one of the best economic development programs in the country. It is one of the best today as well. During my career, I, at the chamber, I recruited over 300 companies. I created over 285,000 new jobs, which is a record in the US. And we did all of that with $350,000 in budget. So that makes it even more significant. So all that is to say, we know a little bit about economic development, not just from the strategic planning point of view, but also from the practitioner's point of view. We know exactly what it takes to build a strong economic development program and how to do it. Our company is also engaged in corporate site location work. And as Blake mentioned, we've completed over $18 billion worth of projects that we cited, both in the US as well as abroad. And that makes us one of the largest independent economic development organizations in the US. What I would like to say is about five months ago, we embarked on this project. We were contracted in June of this year. Our first visit here was in July. And in October, the beginning of October of this year, we delivered to your community, to the city, the market assessment, the targeted industry analysis, as well as a key stakeholder engagement report. That by itself is about a 50, 60-page report. And today, with a draft of the final recommendations, you're getting another 50 or 60 pages, which will make about 110 pages' worth of reading material. I recommend that you read the strategic planning, not all the data that comes with it, because I could also be very boring. I want to highlight, I don't know that we have a lot of time to go in detail through a lot of the numbers, some of the most important findings. We engaged your residents, and we've had several hundred residential responses to our survey, and about 75 or so businesses. And we asked them simply a number of questions. There's a list of about 30 or so to let us know what is important to them as individuals. Your residential survey pointed out that the availability of jobs is the number one concern. They gave it on a scale of 1 to 5, 4.66. 5 being the highest that you can score something. The quality of public schools at 4.53. Cost of living. In any case, all of these factors are considered significant to your residents. Then we asked them how satisfied they are with every one of those items. And the level of satisfaction varies. That's not in any way significant or unique to your city. Residents typically have quite a wide range of dissatisfaction in their own community because they're focused on the individual perspective of how they feel about job creation, cost of living, affordability, the quality of public schools, and city infrastructure, and so forth, and so on. The only thing that I will point out here is the availability of jobs has been the largest gap. And that is what the strategy is going to be addressing. Then we asked the same questions to businesses. And the response is a little bit tighter, as one would expect. Businesses represent not just individuals, but speak on behalf of their corporation. So the quality of life was the number one part of what they thought was the most important aspect of infrastructure that the city is providing to them. Access to customers was not that far behind. Ability to attract and retain a skilled workforce was ranked number three. But throughout this process, throughout the individual key stakeholders interviews that we've had, as well as the four or five focus groups, the attraction of skilled workers was a major concern. As you can see, the gap between most important and how satisfied they are, there are a little bit less than what the residents have pointed out. And then, again, this is nothing unique about you. This is what we have seen in over 650 cities that we have done a strategic development plan for. We proceeded with an analysis which we call SWAP. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And what I'll say is that among the major strengths that have been mentioned is that you are very much an entrepreneurial community. You have a history of entrepreneurs in your city. Definitely a safe and family-oriented city. Pittsburgh State University provides not only jobs, culture, but also the artistic infrastructure in your community. You have good schools, and you have good healthcare. On the weaknesses, number one concern was, again, the hiring of skilled workers by many of your employers. Also, a challenge to retain your college graduates. And that's not something that we can afford to have long term because you're investing in this university. The university is investing in itself. And we want to be sure that the college graduates are retained here and work here in your community. We've also had a housing challenge, as most of the people who are working here live elsewhere. That is primarily because the availability of housing is better, as well as perhaps less expensive. In any case, your community does not have the diversity of the housing product mix that is needed. In terms of opportunities, we've identified what many citizens have told us. And that is greater demand for shopping and entertainment. Strong demand for art, which surprised me a little bit because we don't see that in many places. But what is also important is the strength, obviously, and the opportunities that the university allows to be leveraged, as well as the polymer research center that you have here. On the threats, definitely your community is in the southeast part of the state, where there's a lot of poverty. And your community also is indicative of a community with a high level of poverty level. Let's continue on to say that one of the greatest assets, as I've mentioned, is really the number of employers, the industrial base that you have here. And the companies highlighted in red here are local companies. And often, in this country, in our country, we forget that some of the largest employers started from being very small, startup companies. And somehow, the entrepreneurial zeal in your community has been lost because we take those major companies as given, as major employers. We're not really looking at ways of rekindling entrepreneurship in your community. And that's what the strategic plan, I think, is hopefully going to turn around. So a strong employment base. One, I would say, that is two things that stand out for a small community like the city of Pittsburgh is the printing, as well as the color imaging technologies that are in existence here, as well as the polymer research center. Simply for a small community, a small university, we don't really see these kind of assets in many other small universities. An important element is to look at your community from the point of view of commuters. And this chart, I hope you can read it, basically says that only about 67,000 people are employed in your city but live outside. So this is the majority of them. So let me rephrase that. 6,700 people are employed in your city but live outside of your community. And that's what the housing issue, I think, will hopefully address a little bit. 3,700 or so live in your community are employed outside of your city. And about 3,500 are employed and live in the selection area. So that is the smallest grouping. Now, if you were a small suburban community outside of a major metropolitan area, these are statistics that I would have expected. But you're a small community further away from major metropolitan areas. And I think the fact that you have so many people employed in your city that live elsewhere, it's something that we've looked into a little bit more detail in our economic development strategic plan. Targeted industries. And I hope you can see some of these slides and be able to read them. But you don't have to because this strategic plan can be posted online for your review, for your personal, if you will, at your own leisure. But the focus of our plan is not so much as these major sectors. Advanced manufacturing, creative and technical services, healthcare, destination retail, entertainment, which have been picked as your targeted industries. But rather the focus is on the sub-markets under each one of these major industry categories. So the core targets speak to what you have already in your community. The diversification targets point out to maybe other opportunities that we need to be looking at under each one of those major industries. And lastly, the emerging targets speak to not necessarily emerging technologies, but emerging high-growth sectors in the US economy for which you have substantial assets here. So the targeted industry niches are selected by going through a process that looks at what industry sectors you have and what industry sectors the region has, the regional economy. How are those growing, vis a vis the state or national data? And what assets you have in your community that allow you to support or not support certain of these sectors? So we start off with nearly 30 industry sectors and distill it down to these targeted industries that we have brought to you at this juncture. Let's move very quickly into the recommendations report, the strategic plan, if you will. Because so far, and many other sets of data have allowed us to know more about your community so that we can basically come up with a basic economic development strategy that suits your community needs, that achieves the goals that the community wants to achieve. And we've encapsulated many of these goals into, what I would say, four strategic goals. The number one is to promote entrepreneurs, attract jobs and investment. The number two goal is to attract and retain skilled workers. Number three is to better leverage the university and the talents and resources that it brings to your community. And lastly, economic development is more like any Fortune 500 company product. We have to have a continuing process of improving it. So enrich the quality of your community, enrich the quality of place, as we call it. So I'm going to go rather quickly through each one of those to describe for you the first goal, promote local entrepreneurship, attract jobs and investments. We've developed four strategies. Built a coalition of support for entrepreneurship, entrepreneurs. Number two, perhaps a niche market, and I will explain this in a minute, attract foreign-born entrepreneurs, which is now 30% of all entrepreneurs in the US. And foreign-born entrepreneurs account for nearly 80% of all the intellectual property in all the technology fields in the United States today. Strategy number three, effectively market the city of Pittsburgh to employers, new employers outside of your community, and hopefully attract them here. And lastly, every community has limited resources. And we want to be sure that we target those limited resources to the targeted industries that have already been identified. As one community stakeholder suggested, we have to think long-term in terms of growing the community, not only for attracting new businesses, but also growing the businesses that are already here. And this is a business model that I aspire to. Economic development starts first and foremost by taking care of your existing employers. If he cannot do that, there is very little chance that communities have in attracting new projects. And let me qualify that statement. As a site selector, if I had a client that was interested in this region, I will come and secretly sit down and talk to your major employers. And if I sense that there is any disconnect between your major employers and the community, if they have complaints, I move on to the next community. I don't need to hear anything else. So taking care of your existing employers is the most important thing one can do for economic development. So let's look at some of the specific strategies in building a coalition of support for entrepreneurship. I think it's about time to look at supporting with greater resources the development of a business incubator or accelerator. But more importantly, there are plenty of those around the country. An accelerator or incubator needs to be complemented with a group of angel investors. And I think we have well-to-do people in this community. We've talked to some that are already engaged in this process, but they're not organized. So let's put together an angel group that will support those entrepreneurs. And lastly, also organize a local mentor group to support entrepreneurship. When, out of 10,000 startups that have been surveyed by a major independent organization, they found that the success of an entrepreneur rests solely by a very large margin when they are supported by a mentor. So a mentor is very critical to every entrepreneur being successful. Strategy number two, do more to attract foreign entrepreneurs. The Obama administration recently passed, for the first time in the history of our country, the entrepreneur visa program. And it is, I think, pretty easy to qualify. By the estimates of the US immigration office, it will bring about 3,000 new foreign entrepreneurs to the US every single year. My estimate is that it will be probably more like 10,000 every year. So this is an opportunity to attract the best in the process. And here is where I'd like to give you a personal view. I am an immigrant entrepreneur. My accent, by the way, is not from East Texas. I was born and raised in Greece. I received a scholarship from the US and Greek governments to come and finish my last year of high school in the United States. Foreign entrepreneurs or people don't have the same quality of life requirements as we tend to do in the US, as my two sons. We're not looking for the nightlife. We're not looking for the most exciting places. We are going to go and be very loyal to a community that shows the most support for us. A community that will embrace us, a community that will welcome us. And that is enough. And by the way, you don't get just only one, you get the whole clan as well. In my case, it was just only me. But guess where I went? I went to Brookings, South Dakota. I grew up in a major city, and I went to Brookings, South Dakota. Very small community, just like the city of Pittsburgh here. I loved it. Some people, when I said to them I won a scholarship and came to the US and I mentioned Brookings, they said, "Are you sure this was a reward or a punishment?" Well, it was a fantastic reward for me because I was in a community that welcomed me, supported me, and I thrived in that city. So it's about time that through the university and through a local incubator or accelerator that we engage in a business plan competition in your high schools, in your university here, and perhaps even focus that business plan competition, not just the locals, but maybe an international competition. And maybe focus it on the imaging technologies, printing, or material science that you have here with the Polygraph Institute. I say that because, besides Angelu Economics, my second venture is I've started my own private accelerator. And it's called the International Accelerator. It's the only one in the US that is focused on foreign-born entrepreneurs. We get over 1,000 applicants, and we select maybe 10 companies, the best, the best of the best. These are not entrepreneurs with an idea. These are small businesses, some of them with 30 or 40 people, that have never done business in the US. And they have a lot of possibilities for expanding their operations here. No one is focused on this. This is where I have seen the opportunity. Because it can be done, just as it has been done in Austin or other places, small or large cities. Effectively market Pittsburgh to employers. When I asked if there was at any time an effort to go out of your city and talk to new employers about coming in, there was no affirmative answer. How else do you expect that people will fund you? You need to get out there, you need to tell your story. And every community, small or large, has a way of telling its story. It takes a little bit of training. And we will be more than happy to tell you how those trips can be done and structured and for maximum leverage and maximum success. I would take annual marketing trips to maybe a small community like you. This could be done in conjunction with a marketing trip to talk to their employers, but more importantly, learn from other cities. Economic development does not mean that everything has to be invented here. I can give you a host of small cities that have thrived in the US. Go and find out how they made the difference, why they are so successful. And all of them do it with limited resources and so forth. Even Austin, Texas, where I come from, since the day I took over in economic development 33 years ago, we started an inner-city visit. And we actually do two of them a year now. And 200 business leaders go on those visits to just learn what some of the competitors to Austin are doing and how perhaps we can copy, or maybe they do better than they are. As an economic development program, you've never really seen the marketplace. So if you haven't attended many economic development conferences or site location conferences where you can actually meet with employers, where you can meet some of your peers and learn how they have done it, and so forth and so on. There are 19,000 cities in the US plus. There are about 12,000 economic development organizations and chambers of commerce. So the competition is very fierce. And what we're talking about is about 3,000 projects that are expanding and about 2,500 projects that are new. So 12,000 economic development organizations are competing for roughly about 2,500 new projects. And if you consider that some of those projects, or some communities, attract more than their fair share, the chance of any employer discovering you is probably one in seven years. That's what the average comes down to. So we need to expedite that. We cannot wait for a decade to have a new employer located here. We have to go and find them. We have to be a bit more proactive. It all starts with an economic development website. And quite frankly... Sorry, I'm clicking here and I forget to click the real computer. It all starts with an economic development website. And what I've seen in your community does not cut it out. We need to have an economic development website. We have given you plenty of best practices around the country. So something that I should have said from the very beginning, for each one of those action plans or strategies, we've recommended a best practice or two from around the country. So we don't expect you to figure it out. We expect you, however, to go and look at some of these programs and how other cities have done it. And some of them you can copy altogether, some of them you can improvise and adapt them to your community needs. One of the best programs I've instituted in Austin, Texas, was a local family matching program. And I find this to be critical of smaller communities, in fact. Because as you recruit C-level management in some of your existing companies, it's taken for granted in a small community like yours that they have friends, that they know their way around, or that they could easily blend into your community. When the truth is, the first 30 days of an executive moving to your community, it's the most critical period. In that timeframe, they will know whether they're going to be here for life or they're going to be here for a year or two before they get out of here and work somewhere else. So a local family... So a local family matching program with kids of the same age builds relationships, friendships. It allows both families to get to know another, to integrate with the community, make lifelong friendships. This may seem a minor point in the whole issue of economic development. This is the most important project I have developed in Austin with 100% success rate. We have 400 scientists in our community that came from one employer, and we were concerned that all of them are going to want to go back to headquarters. Every one of them stayed in our community because of this program. Market the targeted industries. I want to build collateral material. I don't believe in printed material. Sorry for all the printers in the room. I, as a science lecturer, I get maybe about 100 pounds of collateral material from cities like the city of Pittsburgh from around the country. I simply don't have the space all the time to view all of those. They go directly into the trash. What I like is to get online electronic material that I can view on my phone or on my computer as I'm traveling around the world. So we need to build not many, but effective collateral material. We need to also look at building networks and relationships with the targeted industries. And we have given you a list of trade shows, conferences for each one of the targeted industries that we listed earlier in the report, so that you can begin to go into some of these events and begin to attract the interest of employers. Lastly, I don't know how many of you have heard of the EB5 Visa Program. It has helped a lot of small communities. It is a program that allows about 10,000 foreign direct investments to receive the U.S. visa and potentially citizenship from overseas. And it brings to the U.S. right now about $6 billion annually. And this program has been in place since the 1990s. So it is a good way to connect with foreign investors and attract investment in your community. So attract and retain skilled workers, goal number two. One of the key stakeholders said, "We need to create an attractive community with jobs and retain young people. So much talent and potential passes through Pittsburgh State University and never looks back." Well, of course they are not. If you have not made an effort to engage them, actually from a high school here, not even college years, you're going to lose them. And every community does that. The important thing is do you ever retain them back or bring them back? There are great programs. Roanoke, Virginia actually has a fantastic program here that brings young people that left the city back to the city during holidays, organizes major events for them, exposes the community to them. So let's go one by one. Mitigate local skill shortages. It's a must that you employ your, survey your employers annually to determine what is your forecast for future job, what kind of jobs are going to be needed to fill? How can you bring to the realm of those conversations the community college or the workforce development organizations to be sure that everyone is talking the same language and everyone is going on that same path? Consider offering, offering not just a few, as we've discovered, but plenty, many more dual credit courses from high school but going to the university. There are cities of your size out there that do a much better job of that. So we need to be sure that we're looking at workforce training in a whole different aspect. Doesn't matter where you get your degree today or what brand university you may have attended. The future workforce is skills development. What do you know how to do and do it very, very well? So skills-based education is perhaps one of the best ways to look at investing, both at the high school level as well as at the university level. Coding schools is probably one of the fastest-growing aspects of education today because of the significant shortage of programmers and information technology workers. There are hundreds of them around the country. They use our private schools. I'm delighted to know that your university is actually talking about bringing or establishing a coding school here that can bring about some breathing room to your IT talent development in your community. And lastly, there is a program called ISAC. I don't know how many of you know this. I employ typically about six of those university graduates. It's an international student exchange program. Bachelors, masters, and even PhDs. You select them by whatever country you want to bring them to your community, by what skill that they have. These are the top university graduates typically from universities around the world. And there's an unlimited number of them that you can hire. And not many people know it. The best way for living short-term IT shortages in your workforce is hire IT folks through this program. Recently, I, now I employ someone from Brazil, from Italy, from Shanghai, from Singapore, and they are top-rated students and talent. So these are graduates that want to come to the U.S. for the employment experience. They can stay for a year. You pay them minimally. And then if you, an employer likes them, they can hire them permanently if they wish. What am I reading? I lost track of my charts here. Sorry about that. One way to bring back some of the workers that have been in your community, that are familiar with your community, is to identify, whoever your alumni has been placed, graduates from your university. At the same time, market to university graduates before they leave in your community. Organize job favors for many of your employers. I used to take about 25 employers to Boston during the wintertime. And we will have about 4,000 people in lines waiting to be interviewed by our employers. And every year, we will bring back to Austin about 400 of them. Job offers will be made on the spot. It took a lot of preparation, but if your employers are telling you that they cannot hire workers, perhaps something like this can be done in a regional market that has a higher unemployment rate or have the significant layers. Every community, and even though the university already is networked pretty well with your employers, needs perhaps a boost, more relationship with employers, more related to providing the workforce needs that they have and so forth and so on. So we are very, very much supportive of such a plan. I've worked in many communities, and one of the most amazing things is employers are not aware of the local workforce development programs. And therefore teach them what is available at the state level, at the local level, so that they can make greater use of them. Strategy number three: leverage university talent and resources. You have a university which is a significant asset compared to many communities of your size that don't have a college or a university. Make sure that you tap on the expertise of the university to start some of your industry cluster groups, create the swap teams, if you will. If you have a certain type of company coming in, you have to have the right volunteers to meet with them and making sure that the right impression is made on each one of those companies. Making sure that also university expertise can mentor a lot of your entrepreneurs. We've talked to the university, and one of the things that is lacking is commercialization or tech transfer. Great research programs, but there is no such effort. But I have to say, I was very encouraged by them telling us that this is their number one priority. They're looking at best practices on how to bring about commercialization and technology transfer on the R and D parts of the university. So best practice is something that we are looking at this. Needless to say, Stanford University is really what everybody wants to copy. They have the best technology transfer program in the country. The University of Florida in Gainesville also has one, a pretty good program as well. Longer term, we have to think about where we're going to put new economic development. And the university has expressed an interest in doing a new research park. While I don't want to put this as a priority item, the strategy has a lifespan of about five or six years. Perhaps during that timeframe, at the very end of that, we can be thinking about potentially doing something like that. Lastly, the last goal is enrich, call it your place. Incentivize internationality downtown, promote a more walkable city center, invest and nurture local festivals and events. Downtown is your living room to your community. Your living room in everyone's house is the best kept up, the most beautiful furniture, because that's the first impression your visitors are going to have by coming to your home. Downtown is the first impression a visitor will have of your city. So anything that you can do to improve your downtown, and you have these beautiful historical buildings, perhaps a mainstream program here will come in handy. Wi-Fi downtown citywide, perhaps, may be also an option. Los Angeles will be the first major U.S. city with a complete Wi-Fi connection for all its residents. Walkable cities. That's what young people like. Most of them don't own their car. Most of them do not want to even own their car. They want to walk, they want to bike. So this is something that many cities, small cities, I would encourage you to go and see El Dorado in Arkansas and how a small city of 20,000 people have made a difference for a lot of the young people. So please stay with me for two more minutes. Festivals. I want to recommend one place for you, and that's the Arts Prize in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Look at what they have done. Every community today can own something and make something of it and brand your community with an event like that. Austin is South Place Southwest. La Colusa is another festival in Chicago. They're branded, they help brand the community, small and large, something of that nature. Lastly, at the end of this report, we're going to give you an implementation matrix. This is not yet complete, so this is a sample. It will list all these actual items. It will list who is going to be responsible for that and the partnering organizations that will help achieve the implementation of each goal. And furthermore, we're going to separate them by short-term, medium-term, and longer term. So everyone is going to know what needs to be done to have a program here that will give you the best results. Let me, let me say this. You have achieved great success, and you have built great entrepreneurial companies and great employers. My view is that the best is yet to come for economic development for your community. If you begin to build a reasonable funded economic development program with a more aggressive outreach efforts, I think the best of economic development is yet to come. So I call on you to implement this strategy. Plans do not have a life of their own. Communities have to put it into action. Stay united on this front. Don't look at the items that you may disagree on this strategic plan. Look at everything that might unite you. Don't look for the trees that you can disagree with. Look at the forest of what this strategy is all about and what it's intended to do to bring the community together, to bring you the best of economic development that is possible for you. Furthermore, build a culture of private-public partnerships. Economic development is not really the responsibility of the government. It really belongs in the private-public domain. And the best of economic development occurs when you have public-private partnerships. Engage the business community in your economic development. The public sector cannot do everything. The public sector has to also promote economic development and fund. Lastly, ask yourselves, if not now, when? If not you, who is going to do it? So I'll leave you with some very famous words. Ask, today, this meeting is all about, ask not what to do, not what economic development can do for you. I'm sure many of you have benefited from strong economic development from the employment base that this community has been able to achieve. The question in front of you, and I'll hold you this evening, is what each one of you can do for economic development. Take the city to a new level of performance, to a new level of economic opportunity that will bring you a sustainable, sustainable economic activity as well as economic perspective. I know I've gone a little bit long. I wasn't sure how much detail to cover, but this is the end of my presentation. I would love to open up for questions. Any questions? Surely there must be someone who has a question. And if we have one, we'll have many more.
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
What do you think is most pressing in the short run?
What is the most pressing?
In the short run?
In the short run?
What are the actions you think the community should take very soon, immediately?
I heard the question, maybe some of you have not, but what is...
Oh, okay, yeah. The question is, what are the most pressing actions in order to stimulate...
Economic development? Okay, that is, okay. What are the most pressing actions that the community should take? What are the first steps in order to alleviate the problems that we have? Well, the implementation metric is not yet completed precisely because we want to look at what resources are available, what more resources can be leveraged, so that we can give you a short-term, medium-term, and longer-term program. Shorter term, definitely we want to look at the housing issue because you employ them and they spend their money somewhere else. And that needs to be looked at pretty seriously. And it will start maybe with surveying some of the workers that live elsewhere, that perhaps could have lived here if there was a certain type of housing that they may have needed that is not present. Number two is work in terms of alleviating the IT shortage, the skilled worker shortage. That's a real threat to a lot of your companies. And it's hard enough to recruit a new company. Surely we don't want to lose an existing company from going elsewhere to expand for their operations, for their needs. So that, to me, is the number one priority. Number three is short-term, building those relationships with the private sector. You have a lot of history here, a lot of companies with a rich culture of entrepreneurial activity. How they can be engaged more in the economic development process and moreover, how they And moreover, how they can also support entrepreneurship, something that they have already done on their own many, many years ago. We need to rekindle that emotion. Yes?
Okay, well, first of all, thank you so much for being here. This is exciting stuff, I think, for everyone in the room. And as I look around the room, I see a lot of city leaders and people who are engaged in this kind of stuff all the time, and ones that are always coming to meetings. What can we be telling the people that we serve and that we work with, that they can do immediately to help their economic development?
Create an economic development committee that will be in the hundreds. Generate ideas, solicit volunteer support, to be helping your organization. When I said that we marketed Austin only with $350,000, that does not say everything we've done. All of our marketing trips were off budget. The volunteer companies, typically from the private sector, business development people, not at the CEO level, they will, I will take 20 of them to California, I'll take 20 of them, 20 of them in Los Angeles and Portland, and Toronto, and Boston, and overseas, in Germany and Japan, every single year. So every other month, we would be doing a marketing trip. They pay their own way, they pay for our expenses, our staff expenses, and they were the best people, some. Because I was considered as an employer of the chamber pot. We have to say great things about our community. But for the employers that we were talking to, to hear from their peers, and how enthusiastic they were about their community, it was, it took us to totally new level. So if you don't want to be competing on incentives, go out and tell your story. Because if you're waiting for a site location consultant myself to come to your community, then you are going to have to give up a lot of incentives to attract companies. In the 12 years that I was in business and the 800 companies we recruited, only 11 received incentives. And those incentives never went to the bottom line of the company. They wanted to build infrastructure for them, to allow many other companies to come with our infrastructure. So I had an economic development committee, there was 3,000 people. I could compel them to do whatever I wanted to do, and they were all willing to support. Now, did all of them come on trips? No, we couldn't possibly take 3,000 people on trips. But we had a meeting every quarter, that updated them on what we were doing. That we were getting the support from the community, and that was critical. Because every public-private sector needs to have the grassroots support. And we turned economic development to sport. The more friends you have, the better your team will perhaps do. And that's what we engage. So engage your citizens, your community. They have a lot of ideas and they have a lot of time that they can contribute to this topic. Yes, sir?
You indicated that several people worked in Pittsburgh and lived outside the community.
6,700, right.
And being in the real estate business, we are very familiar with that. And partly because of the tax structure we have here, there's not much we can do about that. One of your slides kind of confused me when it said that more people live here and work in Joplin than people living in Joplin and work here. Did I misinterpret that slide?
Yes. Was it the slide that I just presented today, or from another person?
No, one of your slides you presented today.
Well, first of all, we don't name Joplin in this, in the slide that I pointed out. But the report actually includes from what cities you may be attracting new people and what cities or counties you lose people. And Joplin, obviously, is a city. But that 6,700 number of people working here and living outside is not just Joplin, it's everyone. And, but the majority, again, are in Joplin. Housing product availability is a key concern, and taxation is yet another. So there are ways of mitigating this, or at least to begin to mitigate this, while looking at development that can be incentivized by the city. That would maybe bring the cost of development a little bit lower than what it might be, to give priority to specific housing products that need to be developed to attract those folks back. Or at least to stem this trend from continuing forever. Because we need to put a stop to this at some point in time. We need to be bringing back those people. Because they're basically doing the economic development for sprinkle, not for the city of Pittsburgh. When they're employed here gainfully and earning wages, it's they will spend somewhere else. Did I answer your question, though?
Yeah, I should have maybe mentioned some of the figures as far as taxes. It wasn't that long ago that a $200,000 house in the Joplin areas, property taxes were around $1,000 a year. Here, almost $3,000. Now, those people will drive back and forth and spend less time with their families when they do that, and live over there than they would if they lived here. And we battle this disparity in the tax circles.
And I'm not going to suggest that we lower the level of taxation to the level that exists elsewhere. Because smaller cities typically have to have a higher tax rate to attract the kind of dollars that are needed to be invested. Larger cities, they have more economies of scale, if you will, so they'll have a smaller tax bite, I guess, on the average house. The question is, how can we selectively vote the product that those folks live? If the tax rates are X difference, I'm sure that can be mitigated by the fact that they have to drive an hour and a half to get here every single day to work. And that is cost savings. So I don't think that they move out of your city just purely for tax purposes. In fact, we don't know why they move out. But we suspect it's because of the diversity of the housing price and product availability elsewhere. More questions? Hold on, wait, the mic.
So to kind of further that discussion a little bit, one of your topics in there that was a level of importance was quality public schools. One of the reasons our tax base is at the level it is is to support quality public schools. So how do you, how do you put a number per se on the benefits of those high taxes to the benefits of attracting people to live here? And what, where is that, that sweet spot, so to speak?
Gosh, I wish if I knew where that sweet spot is. But let me give you an example that hopefully addresses the point. If cost of business or taxation was the only reason why people live where they live and where employers are thriving, nobody should be doing business in Silicon Valley or in New York. I mean, that's the darn truth. But in spite of how high those regulations might be in those two cities or states, in spite of the high taxation level, the perceived benefit to the people and the companies is there. Whether that is in the form of infrastructure, whether that is in the form of high-quality education, whether it is in the form of being in the Silicon Valley and the mecca of technology, that perceived benefit allows people to stay there even though they have to pay extraordinary amount of taxes. So by no means is the only determinant of economic development. When you build a quality community, when you build quality schools and infrastructure, that is going to be the best way to attract people and companies to your city. I don't think that they look at the tax rate by itself alone. It's important to have a competitive cost. But we've actually looked at the cost of operating a business here versus other, well, actually, we've looked at the cost of government here in other communities, and I think it was probably a good thing. Yes, sir?
So, yeah, I probably don't... One of the larger concerns of the community was the availability of jobs. While one of the primary concerns of employers are the availability of workers. So that definitely shows a big skills gap there. So when you're talking about skilled labor force, at what level are you looking at? Are you looking at undergraduate level, college, are you looking at graduate level? How do you bridge, and if it is that large, how do you bridge that large of a gap with dual-credit classes or on-the-job training? How do you propose you bridge that large of a gap, I guess?
Well, your problem is not unique to the city of Pittsburgh. Every city around the country is going through a serious worker shortage, particularly skilled workers. I want to tell you why. The baby boomers are approaching retirement age. So starting from about two years, three years ago, 2012, 2013, we are having a demographic gap in our country. And those demographics will not get rebalanced until maybe 2025 to 2027, they said. So what is that gap? We are supplying 1 million workers less in the 25- to 44-year-old demographic than our country was accustomed to in prior decades. So it's creating a rather significant shortage in a period of 15 years. A million workers per year, that's 15 million workers, and that's where everybody wants to buy. So the employers tend to go to communities that have a better chance of attracting those employees from other places. Because nobody, nobody has the answers for that. Nobody has a plethora of skilled workers. Whether it's small cities or large cities, that problem is in place. How do you mitigate that? In our recommendations, we suggest the early college program in your high schools. Again, skills-based education. We're suggesting a lot more online training to be done, both at the high school level. Your curriculum needs to be, at least a majority of it, can be also done online, both at the high school level as well as at the university level. Because you don't want to take people out of work to put them into a situation of having to retrain. They can do it on their own time at any point in time. A coding school is a great possibility, longer term, of alleviating this. These schools exist, there are several hundred of them in the country. They charge probably about $20,000, $30,000 in tuition. In six months, they guarantee you a job that will earn you $70,000 or $80,000. So typically, the coding schools go hand-in-hand with employers. Another program we mentioned was the ISAC program, where you can attract 150, 200 people from outside the U.S. Bring them here, that will be IT workers, if you will. Wherever those skills, the skill gaps exist. And for every one of the targeted industry, in the more detailed report that we have provided, you know we have pinpointed exactly where those gaps exist.
Hey, Angelo, let's maybe we wrap up with this. You've talked a lot about entrepreneurism today. And along with having a four-year university in our community, what has really set Pittsburgh apart is a long track record of successful entrepreneurial stories. And I'd like to put him on the spot and ask someone who founded a business out of this garage and grew it to now serving over 8 million students around the world, Harvey Dean, after what he's heard in trying to find the next Harvey Dean, if anything that you've talked about today resonates with him.
Well, it's been very interesting. I don't think I knew I was an entrepreneur until I was so far in debt that I couldn't get out unless I... Then people started saying I was an entrepreneur. So I believe there is, there are a lot of things you've talked about. I'm excited about the potential with working with the university and working with that concept of having an ad hoc kind of group of people out there that work with entrepreneurs. And one of the things that I think helped me in those early days was the fact that there were a couple of teachers that helped me a lot with the technology side of what I was trying to do, the technical side. And also, there was an old gentleman that was retired out there from the business school, who, I didn't know anything about keeping books, and I still don't know a whole lot about it. But he, he took care of that for me in those early days. So you've got this wonderful asset at the university, and you have individuals out there that are willing to help. And had not been for that, and that couple of teachers that helped me that were in the public school, and the fact, again, that I got so far in debt, and finally found a guy that would help me there. There was another local business guy that loaned me some money, and the bank had kind of, I'd been tapped out there. And so, so on entrepreneurial, there's another thing, I don't know what it is, I don't know what I are, but I do know that we're unique birds that believe in our dream to the degree that we're willing to sacrifice a lot, and not knowing maybe that we're about to kill ourselves or kill our family. We just keep doing it. And I think there's also this need for a sort of a support group for crazy entrepreneurs. And there's a lot of people that can help. And yet, I do think the connection with the university and that program is a great idea. And they've been very instrumental in my success and our company's success because of that.
Well, thank you very much for that. Most people would probably consider an entrepreneur crazy because they bet the farm, they sacrificed so much, often their families, to create something bigger than themselves. And yet, we forget all those sacrifices when we see successful entrepreneurs and the substantial companies that they've created that provide a source of employment and pride for our community. Your community has a history doing this. But somehow, in the last decade or two, most of that has been forgotten, and we need to rekindle that. You have retired executives that could be SCORE, I don't know, you don't have a local SCORE chapter, perhaps you should. That's a national organization of retired executives that have time to devote to mentoring young people. And no matter what you do, whether an entrepreneur that you mentor is going to be successful or not, they'll be engaged and are less likely to leave your community if they're engaged than otherwise would be the case. So the value of the university in supporting entrepreneurship is invaluable. In fact, I cannot see entrepreneurship thriving in a community that doesn't really have a university, or at least it's W hard for them to succeed. So again, not many communities of your size have the Kansas Technology Center or the Polymer Research Facility. Whatever you do in terms of an incubator or accelerator, don't make the mistake of limiting it to the locals or your university. Bring people from around the state, around the U.S., around the globe here. Because it's not often that you can find this type of facilities in a small community around the world. And I will drive that point home. When I created the Austin Technology Incubator in Austin, out of the Chamber of Commerce, and then we spun it up, it was, the values of it were very, very strict. In Austin, we could have followed up with Austin startups, but we purposely said, one-third of the companies needs to come from Texas, one-third from outside of Texas, the rest of the U.S., and one-third overseas. And it was voted for many, many years the best incubator in the country for precisely doing that. So don't do, don't venture into doing anything in terms of an incubator or accelerator, limiting it to whatever... it to whatever the local base might be. You have the research facilities to bring people from outside.
All right, Angelo, I think we'll go and wrap it up right there. I know these five individuals have a meeting in 20 minutes. Lots of great information. You said over 100 pages will be in this report. This will be posted on the city's website as soon as possible. Encourage everybody to go read it when you get a chance. Thank you all for coming out and hearing more about this. I think the turnout that we got is very reflective of the community's interest in economic development, and can't wait to make it a team sport. So thank you all for coming out. Thanks to you, Angelo. Look forward to reading.
And if any of you want to ask more questions, I'm not going anywhere, so.